Good evening, everyone. It's time to call our meeting to order. We appreciate everyone being here this afternoon. At this time, we are going to ask Commissioner Phillips to lead us into the invocation and the flag. We'll all stand, please.
Thank you, Lord God in heaven, for this beautiful day. Thank you, Lord, on many blessings you have blessed upon us in our lives. Be with all of the bad happenings that's happening in our country today. Be with all the sick folks that need your help. Be with all the first responders. Be with all the military men and women in this country and out of our country that make our country free where we can have our meetings like we have. Lord, be with all these commissioners tonight that we may make all of the best decisions that we can make. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
The leaders of the tribe of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Once again, we appreciate everyone being here. Will there be any additions or deletions to this afternoon's meeting?
Mr. Chairman, none that I know of.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Hollingworth, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries. All right, first on the agenda, we have a motion from the Florida Association of County Trust. Am I here?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, the podium, sir. Give your name to the clerk, please, sir.
Yes, the man is Mike Monglin, the Director of Member Services with Public Risk Underwriters. We administer the Preferred Governmental Insurance Trust. The trust is a public entity insurance carrier in Florida, and in that capacity, we administer the insurance coverages for Columbia County. Once a year, we like to recognize those within our membership who do an outstanding job at what they do. One of the recognitions is a Safety and Mismanagement Department of the Year Award. This year, I nominated Ben Skipper in Columbia County for that. And in the narrative I sent to the nominating committee, I wrote, "The program was overseen and managed by Ben Skipper, the safety officer for the county. Ben had worked in the county landfill and had shown an interest in safety while there and was promoted to his current position. Since then, he has relentlessly pursued to improve his training and education. He is now a certified OSHA trainee trainer, having taken the OSHA 501 course. He is certified in forklift training, safety management, risk management compliance, and hazwapper. He has begun to improve the trajectory of the county that the county has been on for several years. The experience modifier, which is a part of the premium calculation, has not been below 1.14 since 2003 and consistently is the 1.4 to 1.6 range. The loss ratios for the last four years are 24%, 29%, 13%, and the current year is at 26%, which is a significant and consistent reduction." Columbia County may have its first credit modifier in over two decades with a potential significant premium savings. But more importantly, Columbia County is a really safe place to work. So with that, I'd like to present this to Ben and the county with our thanks.
Agreed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mike.
Thank you.
You can get in. Thank you, Ben.
Good job, Ben.
All right, next on the agenda, we have five public hearings. Can I plan it? Louie, you all.
Good evening, Commissioners. How are you all? Our first public hearing is to consideration of ordinance number 2024-12. It's a request for zoning change on the parcel that's outlined in your package on by Lenoir O'Dell and others. The request for zoning change is from RSF2 to commercial intensive. This is contiguous with another parcel that's already contiguous of commercial intensive. It has been duly advertised and noticed and has been recommended for approval by the planners on board.
Okay. All right, I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-12. Will there be anyone in opposition of the recommendation of zoning planning board? No opposition. I declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board staff? Once again, you all didn't put the districts this is in. So I, uh, I, uh...
It's mine, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Yeah. And, uh, Mr. Chair, I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-12. I sat in on the zoning hearings and I think everybody come to a resolution that we're full acceptance.
I've got a motion, second. A motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
First public hearing is for the adoption of ordinance number 2024-14. It's a consideration of a request by Valroy LLC for zoning change to these parcels as mentioned here and outlined in the city maps in your packet, to change the zone from MAG3 to industrial light warehousing. Now... There it is, right there. These parcels are located on the far west side of the county on Highway 90.
That was it.
Over the years, they've experienced several different uses. It is zoned ag3 right now. What's proposed for it is a mobile home factory direct, which is correct for IRW, which is zoning, which is being requested here. It has been duly advertised and noticed and has been approved for approval by the planners on the board.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-13. Will there be anyone in opposition? Anyone in opposition? Now hearing in opposition, I declare the public hearing closed.
Likewise, Chair, I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2024-13.
Second. About a motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Hollingworth, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
First public hearing is for the adoption of ordinance number 2024-14. It's a consideration of a request by Valroy LLC for zoning change to these parcels, as mentioned here and outlined in the city maps in your packet, to change the zone from MAG3 to industrial light warehousing. Now... There it is, right there. These parcels are located on the far west side of the county on Highway 90.
That was it.
Over the years, they've experienced several different uses. It is zoned ag3 right now. What's proposed for it is a mobile home factory direct, which is correct for IRW, which is zoning, which is being requested here. It has been duly advertised and noticed and has been approved for approval by the planners on the board.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024, I'm sorry, 2024-14. Will there be anyone in opposition? Will there be any opposition? Now seeing any opposition, I declare the public hearing closed.
I move that we adopt ordinance 2024-14.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Fourth public hearing is for the adoption of ordinance 2024-15. Consideration of a request by Valroy LLC. This is the companion bill to the previous one that changes the future land use from agricultural 3 to industrial. And again, it's been duly noticed and advertised and comes with recommendations of P&amp;Z to be adopted.
Okay. I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-15. Will there be any opposition to the recommendation? Now seeing any, I declare the public hearing closed.
I move we adopt ordinance number 2024-15.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Fifth and last public hearing I have is for the adoption of ordinance number 2024-16. Consideration of a request by David Morell on behalf of Edward Jones Trust to change the zoning of the parcel displayed on the screen up there from RSF2 to RSFMH2. That would be contiguous with land directly across the street. This is located on Troy Street.
Okay.
And it's been duly noted and advertised and has been recommended for passage by or approved by P&amp;Z.
I declare the public hearing open on ordinance number 2024-16. Will there be anyone in opposition to the recommendation of this legislation? Now seeing any, I declare the public hearing closed. What's the wishes of the board?
I move for adoption of ordinance number 2024.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Mr. Chair, if I may mention, the future land use will not require a change in this because it's the same future land use as was employed by the current zoning. So it doesn't have a companion bill with this one.
All right.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you very much. You do a good job, Louie. I appreciate you. David?
Thank you very much. This first public hearing, or the only public hearing we have right now, is the first of many of the budget public hearings that we have to have every year. This one is a public hearing on the Resolution Number 2024 R-10, the Uniform Method of Collecting Non-Affluent Special Assessments. Obviously, every year, we do special assessments. This is adopting the way we charge for them and collect them. Then what's important to note is that it does include the street lighting, the solid waste, and includes the incorporated areas of the Fort White and Lake City. So that it does allow us, if we need to, okay, to do that.
I declare the public hearing open on Resolution Number 2024 R-10. Will there be anyone in opposition of the Uniform Method of Collecting Non-Affluent Special Assessments? There's no opposition. I declare the public hearing closed. Motion from the board to adopt?
I make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 2024 R-10.
By Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries. I need a motion to approve the consent.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
I move to adopt the consent.
I've got a motion to adopt the agenda by Mr. Hollingworth.
Second.
Second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries. Mr. Ford?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is, should be a fairly quick formality this evening. The board will recall the 2022 interlocal agreement with the Water Management District concerning what we've kind of referred to as the Hill Dam property. This interlocal agreement follows meetings of this board as well as meetings of the governing board of Swanag River, and they desire cancellation. The attached interlocal agreement would operate to cancel the March 2022 interlocal.
What you need is vote, a vote on that?
Yes, sir. Need to adopt the interlocal agreement.
Okay. I need, I got a motion by Mr. Murphy to adopt the interlocal, second by Mr. Ford. Any questions or comments? All in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Mr. Kirby?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. We're always trying to capture our annual repaying. Here's one of the routes. Gabe Street, we had three responsive bidders. John C. Hip was low, 681, 756, 50. We are requesting a motion on Ward Bid Number 2024 O6, the hip construction for the total bid amount of 681, 757. And to approve the...
A motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye. Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Kraus?
All right, the first one I have is kind of a presentation from Columbia EMS to give you an update of kind of the status of where we are in our contract and compliance with the contract. We're going to be having the provision of EMS in October. In addition, they are requesting to rent office space. Contract is in your packet, and a request to rent radio. Just kind of like to turn it over to Mr. Witt, so he can kind of give you an update.
Good evening, board. Thanks for having us here. We are about 10 weeks into the process since we signed the contract with you guys, and we've got a little bit done since then. I just want to kind of go over what we've got done. We are well ahead of all our timelines. But just to let you guys and the public know where we're at, in the last 10 weeks, we've hired our medical director. His name is Dr. Grant Barker. He's 30 years old, brand new emergency physician. He's going to be very gung ho, very hands-on. You'll probably see him riding ambulances and actually participating in calls. He'll be hands-on with all our new crews, and so we're excited to have him on the team. We've obtained our DEA license so we can purchase narcotics. We've hired a billing company. We've hired an HR company. We purchased 50% of our fleet. We've secured our state license. Tonight, we hope to secure our stations. We've ordered radios. Radios have presented a little challenge for us because of the nature of the network that Columbia County uses. You have to use proprietary equipment, and this equipment is made by Motorola. And Motorola has some supply chain issues going on. So we can't get brand new radios for eight or nine months in. We do have a workaround by reading radios from the EOC. They say they have them, and that's what that radio contract is. That's to give us the workaround until we can get our new supply in. On the other side, the radios we use to communicate with the hospitals, those are in stock. We have one of those, so that side of the equation won't be a problem. And we've begun taking our first round of resumes for the first crews we hire. These crews will include our shift captains. So these first three paramedics we hire will be in leadership positions, and they will help us expand the company out as we ramp up to five ambulances 24/7. And, you know, talk about when I was sitting on that side of the aisle, I always talked about return on investment for taxpayers. We believe our return on your investment at us is, we know we can run this a little bit more efficient than government could have done it, so that's going to save you money there. And this happened, we put out there a lot, we're probably the only company who's done this, but every taxpayer in the county, every citizen in the county gets a benefit from Columbia County EMS because we don't balance field. If you're a resident of Columbia County, we take your insurance and we're done. So that is a benefit that every resident in the county will get from Columbia County, from Columbia EMS. And I'll mess that up a lot because I refer back to the old Columbia County days. So that's where we're at. I'll take any, any questions or...
Any question from the board?
Yes, sir.
Ever you had a question?
Yeah, I just was just kind of checking with you to make sure we got all, I know you say you own the schedule and everything. So you've got all the ambulances in place as far as being here and all that kind of stuff?
We've got half of them here, and we expect to have them all here well ahead of time. I think in our contract timelines, we've got to have them all on site by September 1st. We think we're going to be well ahead of that mark.
Okay. Well, I, I know you will if you say you are. Okay. So thank you.
Any other question? Now, here, any question from the board? I need a motion to, for the recommended motion to approve commercial building lease agreement and radio equipment lease agreement. That motion.
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Phillips, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Toby.
Good seeing you, Toby.
Good seeing you, y'all.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Madam Clerk, did you get that was the first birth agreement?
You hit fat, there EMS man.
All right, David.
All right. So the next one is the Preliminary Rate Resolution 2024 R-16 for Solid Waste. This is your annual solid waste collection thing. Basically, it's going to generate about $4,501,112. It's not really a change from last year, but this, the preliminary rate resolution is, just to remind the public, this is the maximum you can charge.
Yes.
The final rate resolution is what you actually will charge.
Great. Motion?
So moved.
A motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
And so the reason I mentioned that just a second ago is the preliminary rate resolution for the fire protection services. We have in the preliminary rate resolution the maximum amount you can charge of $301.90. That's what the assessment study said last time we ran the study. Last year, you chose to adopt a rate of $285.98, which is a difference of $15.92 per residential unit. It will generate roughly $8,193,690. Of course, we want to remind you that this assessment does not fully fund your fire department. There are certain services that just cannot be funded with the assessment, and we ask that you approve the preliminary rate resolution 2024 R-17 with the $301.90. And again, at the final budget, you can set it where you need to, but this gives you the ability to have flexibility.
Tell me again about the Perseona family dwelling, a difference of $15.92. What are you saying?
I'm saying when we did the study, which was about three years ago.
Mm-hmm.
It said, if you want to collect all the revenues, you should, you should set it at $301.90. The board did not set it there. The board set it lower. But the board also at that time said they preferred to do it in increments rather than all at once. So somebody doesn't walk in and suddenly get a $100 increase in the bill. So last year, you set it at 285.98. You set it below the $301. So at most, you can raise the rate this year $15.92. Doesn't mean you have to, but that's the most you can raise it.
And, and, and this board said last year during our, this same period of time, our budget was up, that we wanted to raise it in small increments.
Yes.
Instead of raising a big portion of it at one time.
Yes.
So that is what we're doing.
Absolutely.
With this rate revenue.
Yes.
Okay, great. You heard the, uh, the, uh, uh, rate resolution for fire protection services. What's the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to accept Resolution Number 2024-17.
A motion by Mr. Murphy, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
So the next one is the Preliminary Rate Resolution 2024 R-18 for Pine Ridge Court MSBU. Basically, it's the same as last year. It'll generate about $2,072 for the capital improvements and $2,994 for the maintenance. Again, it's no rate change.
Okay. Recommended motion for the Preliminary Rate Resolution Number 20?
I make a motion. We approve Resolution Number 2024 R-18.
Second.
A motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Murphy, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Excuse me. Preliminary rate resolution 2024 R-19 for Terren Heights Street Lighting MSBU. Again, the estimated revenue generated will be $2,442. No rate change, which means we're going to continue to charge $74 per dwelling.
Motion?
I... Motion to approve preliminary rate resolution.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Next one is preliminary rate resolution 2024 R-20, Emerald Lake Street Lighting MSBU. Again, it will generate about $8,978. It is not a rate change, so the rate will remain at $46.04 per dwelling unit.
Motion?
I move that we approve that rate.
Motion by Mr. Hollingworth, second by Mr. Ford, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
The next one is the Preliminary Rate Resolution 2024 R-21, Spring Hollow Street Lighting MSBU. It will generate approximately $2,109. It is not a rate change, so the rate will remain at $55.50 per dwelling unit.
Motion?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Murphy?
Second.
Second, Mr. Murphy, all in favor of the signature, I'm, I'm sorry.
Mr. Phillips.
I told my board that.
You keep, you keep expecting me from him when we get that.
That's hard call.
Say aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Madam Clerk, she looked at me. She...
So the next one is preliminary rate resolution 2024 R-22, Long Lake Street Lighting MSBU. It will generate $4,149. Again, it is not a rate change, so we will continue to charge $118.53 per dwelling unit.
Motion?
So moved.
Uh, Mr. Murphy?
Second.
Mr. Phillips, all in favor of the signature saying aye.
Aye.
Approve like sign, that motion carries.
Now we're up to something different other than preliminary rate resolutions. Lakeshore Hospital Authority update. So as you know, the board last time we met called to have a joint session. Their board chose not to vote, so the joint session did not happen. If the board wishes to continue to do a referendum, we need to take action relatively quickly because the supervisor of elections will need the language early August. You have several options. At this point, I will defer to Mr. Foreman to outline the options.
So when we previously discussed this issue some time ago, back when the receivership was going on, Hospital Authority Board didn't have enough members. It was considered inactive. And so Mr. Coburnline and I had determined that we could do the referendum process to tip off the legislature, so on, so forth. Once they became active, the process changed a little bit. Mr. Cannon and I talked about it. You can still do a referendum in November if you choose, but it'll be nothing more than a straw poll. It'll be non-binding. It's just going to be an opinion poll. Ultimately, it's going to take a resolution of this board or potentially a resolution of the electoral hospital authority board, some sort of resolution or ordinance passed on to Chuck Brandon, who will then take it to Tallahassee. If the legislature then votes to dissolve, then you have your binding referendum. Okay? So then it has to go either on a special election or it would go November 2016, or excuse me, 2026. Boy, I want to write that down. 2026. Because when you, again, we talked about the potential liabilities of allowing the district to be dissolved, what that could mean to the county. The voters get to decide if that's what's going to happen. So that's why that binding referendum follows what the legislature does. Okay? So if there's good news in that, it's that the sense of urgency is down. You know, whatever we need to do, we just need to get Mr. Brandon in time for session, which won't be until the spring. But at the same time, if you do want to do that straw poll, as David indicated, we need to make that decision probably tonight, which would just be, do you favor, you know, dissolution of the, of the hospital authority?
Well, as, as far as I'm concerned, I, I don't see any reason of doing a straw poll when we got a certain way we got to do it due to this legislation process to do so. And, and I asked Mr. Foreman this, and he was going to check it out. Back in 56, I guess it was, or somewhere in the 50s, when, when this special taxing district was, was set up, I wanted to know who opposed the legislature to ask for that to be done. And why I asked that question was whoever asks the legislature to do that should be the one to ask them to dissolve it.
And, and Commissioner, I haven't found the answer to that question yet. I have, I've not learned it.
Maybe the store knowledge of it there you get. They don't know it.
No.
Dale was around in 56.
The store knowledge.
Put a quarter in and handle that. We'll see you come out after.
Do, uh, do we, what you guys want to do? Mr. Foreman, if giving his legal opinion on what we need to do?
Joe, what is your suggestion as far as, I mean, I always say, put it for the people. Let the people decide. That's my opinion.
And so what I'm telling you is, no matter what, it eventually gets to the people. They get the last.
Okay.
The question is, do you want them to also have the first word? So the referendum would be the voters telling you, yes, do it, or no, don't, in November, right? Or if they say no, don't, then we'll just drop everything.
Okay.
But if the referendum goes through, then y'all will have to adopt a resolution. Some board is going to have to adopt a resolution to give to Chuck Brandon. Now, y'all could do that at your next meeting. You don't have to wait for the referendum to do that. If this board is satisfied that you want to do that, don't ask for the referendum. If you really do want to wait and see what the people say, remember, y'all have the ability to... to do straw polls every single election if you want to. The the legislate, the statute gives you that authority. So that's kind of what my advice is, is if you want to know what the people think in November of twenty twenty-four, we need to do a referendum. It'll be non-binding, just a straw poll. If you have a pretty good idea of what you want the ultimate outcome to be, right? A a resolution telling Mr. Brandon that you want to have this dissolved, or that you don't want to support a resolution like that, you don't need the referendum as a precursor. You can just do that. You have that power. And you don't have to exercise that power now. You can exercise that power the day before Mr. Brandon goes to session. You can hand him the resolution, take this with you to Tallahassee. I wouldn't suggest you do that, but that's how late you could get.
So so Joe, I I'm sorry, Robbie, go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
So so Joe, if I understand what you're saying, right? We just have to have somebody, either us or Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board need to pass a resolution to give to our representative senator. And he has to have that before the session starts. And that'd be in January, I think?
And and again, I don't want to speak for Stosh, he's way back there. But I think Stosh would agree with me. The sooner you do it, the better, so he can prepare his 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 agenda.
So so if we done a straw a straw poll, it would be on the August election, right?
It would be November.
It would still, it wouldn't be on November.
Right. I think time is. You know.
What the straw poll does is it gives you something that you could give to the representatives to indicate what the the people are.
That's all it would be.
So so we could do a resolution now if we desired.
Yeah.
And if the straw poll, if we done the straw poll, and the and the people said, we don't want to do this, we could just do a way of resolution.
Absolutely. Resolutions can always be set aside with very little effort from the board.
Uh, I agree with Robbie. I I want the people of county to decide what future for the Lake Shore Hospital Authority is. If it's, if they want it, keep it, that's fine. If they don't, that's fine. And the only way for us to know how to do that is through a straw poll.
I agree with Rocky.
Oh, so I would pass the refer, I would, I would ask you to bring a resolution back that we can pass at the next meeting. And I would make a motion at this meeting tonight that we go ahead and approve a straw poll to be done with the Citizen Club of County. That way, that gives us the information we need to move forward either way.
We're not.
Motion.
You got the motion?
One thing I'd like to say is if.
Oh, let me, let me get my motion on the floor, hurry. Motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Hollerworth.
Discussion. Mr. Murphy. I'm just curious to see Dale, what's your input, or do you have input?
And what I was going to say is you might want to give the attorney the language that you're looking for for the.
I'll restate it before they vote.
Yeah, we need to explain it very well.
Yes.
I don't.
I know somebody's paying him, so I just want.
You mean he doesn't come up here for?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My main purpose in attending tonight, as the Executive Director of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority, was to simply say thank you. It was I who came to your workshop, and we are, we as the authority only meet once a month. There were no scheduled meetings, so I didn't have the opportunity to talk to the trustees about your workshop, what their thoughts may have been, and I was trying to preserve any right that they may wish to have. So I ask that y'all agree to a special meeting if they would participate. After having gotten their own opinion from their own attorney and having had some discussion, they simply did not feel that it was necessary at this point. I can tell you that everything that I have heard Mr. Foreman say is pretty much what I've heard Mr. Kennon say, so I don't think there's a disagreement at all on the processes. Now, as we work through it, I can almost assure you that the Hospital Authority will have their own discussion pertaining to it. They may and may not agree to whatever plan of action the Board of County Commissioners may decide upon. I don't know, I don't have a crystal ball, but I do know they intend to discuss it at some point prior to the twenty twenty-five legislative hearings. So I will also offer you this. There is precedent for what you are discussing. And the only local person that I know of that has any firsthand knowledge of that is Richard Powell. And of course, you all know Richard. Richard's local. As you get into the discussion about the Hospital Authority and maybe what historically has happened in the state of Florida, you may want to call upon Richard at some point just to share his knowledge. I found it to be very beneficial, very helpful. So I'll just offer that. You do have somebody locally that can provide you a considerable amount of of information as it relates to these processes. Other than that, again, I want to say thank you for having at least considered what I asked. I appreciate that very much. Thank you, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have, if you have any.
Any questions to Dale?
Dale, I I I have a question. I I watched, I watched the meetings at Lake Shore Hospital Authority. All I've really seen the board talk about and meet about is not anything to do with a hospital or patients, it's what to do with empty buildings.
Yeah.
So are they, in your, in your opinion, does Lake Shore Hospital serve any kind of?
I I believe it still has useful purpose. Now, do I think that purpose has changed considerably? I do individually. That's my opinion, not those necessarily of the trustees. And you're absolutely correct. Since Community Health Systems left in two thousand twenty, the vast majority of the meeting, the effort, the time, the cost, the expenditure, has been in maintaining buildings and trying to find other end users for them. And it's kind of gone, if you've watched the meetings, it's kind of gone through a process. Originally, it was we will only consider those that provide medical services. And then when we learned we could not give a level of service for medical services that was desirable, they moved on to a different tier and so on and so forth. I can tell you that there is ongoing negotiations as early as today with companies that do provide medical services, but they will not be at the hospital level. They will provide good quality care, those types of things, but, you know, we're not going to have an ER there. Now, one day, maybe. There is a new law, which I know y'all are familiar with, dealing with rural hospitals. I think that's something that that the trustees should vet out. And then, of course, they're not immune to hearing what you hear. They realize that, you know, they have taxing power. A lot of people disagree with that because they're not elected, but they are an independent district. There has been discussion or recommendations from others that they consider asking to be a dependent district, which basically puts them under your review, things of that nature. There's just a mixed bag of conversation I've heard. But once they, once they determine the end users of the building, I think the trustees need to have a long conversation about what they envision the future to be and what role they may can play in it. They may have to do that understanding, they have to be self-supporting. There may not be a millage component anymore after that. I don't know. I'm just saying, when I look at other hospital authorities and what I've seen happen historically, that is something that has happened. So, you know, we can look at those to maybe be an indication of the future. May not be anything, may just say dissolve. You'll find, you'll find out too, that in dissolution, one of the biggest obstacles of all these authorities and the people who were designated to take them over was public records.
How many years has it been since y'all actually taxed the Citizens Fund of County any? I mean, right now, you're not taxing.
No, this, this will be the fourth year. Now, so they don't levy a tax, they do technically levy a tax. It is one ten thousandths of one mil. And they do that in order to keep a place on the tax bill. But it generates five or six hundred dollars annually, something like that. It's very minimal.
Dale, what's the current status of the agreement with Meridian?
Um, we as an authority approved a one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar offer to resolve the reverter and any known and unknown reverter issues that may occur in the future. That offer has been tendered. The preliminary indication is that it is acceptable to the leadership of the Masons. However, through the Masonic Lodges rules and regulations, they have to go through a voting procedure, and it is working its way through that process now. Don Saboy, who is the Executive Director of Meridian, attended the last meeting of the trustees. He said that Meridian was still interested in the building. Lately, we've had, you know, a lot, or at least a some citizen pushback. There has been some comments made about Meridian, some true, some not true, and to what impact that may have, particularly on the downtown area and downtown properties. So that's been discussed. But that's kind of where the Meridian proposal is. Right now, I think the agreement between the authority and Meridian is prepared, it's been vetted over time. I think once the reverter is resolved, and that should be resolved very soon, I think that process is going to work its way through quickly.
You know, question to Dale.
If if Meridian moves in that building.
Yes, sir.
And you just said it's possibility it could be a ER maybe down the road.
No, no, the hospital will never be another ER, Commissioner.
I thought, I thought on the.
No, I said it, there will not be an ER there, is what I was trying to say, because you simply can't meet OCA standards, the Agency for Healthcare Administration.
All right, I just assumed that.
I'm sorry, it's probably the way I said it, but that was not the way I intended.
I went in this year and come over the wrong.
You know, question to Dale. Dick, you have anything you'd like?
I'd like that something. Yes, sir. I'm sorry, that picture.
Now he's going to build that picture.
I'm told.
There's some information that is not well-known. Included in the enabling legislation of Lake Shore Hospital Authority is the ability, the power to issue bonds. So why is that important? If we ever, if when, I say when, if we ever get another hospital or big healthcare facility, it will likely come from, hopefully from Shands, Baptist, Advent. All three of those are nonprofit. The nonprofits cannot issue tax-free bonds. So what they do, and Shands is a great example, if when they build facilities, they go to the host county, Latua is the biggest one, and they issue conduit bonds through the county. Now, the bonds say have provisions that say the county's not liable for repayment, but your name's on those bonds, you make all these assurances, and you do all of that. So the county has an obligation to monitor, and every time you do an issuance, you have, that has to be vetted and explained. Okay, so if you look on the Shands financial statements on its balance sheet, there's eight hundred million dollars that were issued through Latua County. There's three hundred million that paid for the facilities in the villages that's issued through Sumter County. Baptist Hospital, when you look on their financial statements, they have hundreds of millions of dollars through the city of Jacksonville. Same with Mayo. So when that happens, and we want it to happen, and they come to the county, if you keep Lake Shore alive in some form, then you retain that power, those bonds can be issued through Lake Shore and not clutter up the county's balance sheet. So I I think, I think whatever happens, that's a power that you won't ever get back, because that, but that's in there. And those of us that can remember, way back, that was used once when Sanifai took over Lake Shore, they issued bonds through the authority to make improvements to the hospital. So it's a neat thing that it would be a shame to give that up.
So Dick, if I understand you correctly, if it was dissolved to a point, it could be restructured, is there, are you saying there's a possibility of restructuring to be able to?
Well, in the enabling, and I'm, I'm not an attorney, sometimes I might talk like one, but but in the, in their enabling legislation, in that special act, they have the power to issue bonds.
Yes.
Without referendums or without anything. And so it would be good to retain that, that power, that facility, because when Shands, hopefully Shands will come and say, we want to build a hospital here, they're going to come right to the county and say, we want to do conduit financing, which is due and which is, is done. But if I had a way to keep your balance sheet clean and not, every time you want to issue debt, you don't have to explain and do that, you don't have to monitor the debt to make sure they're complying with all of the requirements of it, making the payments timely, keeping their operating ratios, doing all of that, I would rather that be on Lake Shore's balance sheet. And that's really all I'm saying.
And I totally get that, but the, I mean, is there a way to reorganize it to maintain then that ability? I mean, is that what you're saying, or is there?
If right now, it can do that.
Okay.
And so you don't want to, it would be advantageous to not change it in a way that you lost that power.
But.
Not really all.
So Dick, you're saying that that for, for that reason, we shouldn't dissolve the board, should restructure?
I'm saying to keep it alive, you know, to keep it alive is basically to keep the entity going, and hopefully, like Dale was explaining, once the buildings are, are settled, there will be, I'm looking at their current expenditures, like Dale said, most of the expenditures are keeping the buildings going and the legal expenses of figuring out how to jump through all the hurdles. And once those are gone, you still, they're down to one employee, one full-time employee. If you took it over someone like Dale mentioned, I've been involved with the Citrus County Hospital Board for many years, and now I'm kind of their CFO thing. And there, if they tried, have tried, and you know, everything's political everywhere, but tried to get other entities to take them over, they said, please, would you do this? And the biggest hurdle was public records, because they had fifty years of public records and people requesting it and storing them and doing all of that. So so some employee would have to deal with public records. You have some restricted funds that would be used in some manner for healthcare. Some employee needs to administer whatever that is. So I don't think there's any real savings from what you're doing now to blend it into the county.
And 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 here where I have the worry. If there is an agreement with 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 Mil Health to buy that building, now what you do, you got one building left and some land. So we're saying that we might look at restructuring the board, so if there is a health institute wants to come in and build a hospital, that authority, that board has the authority to issue bond in order to help that, that construction out.
Yes, okay.
What what happens with engine care? I don't think, I think there are nine, ten people, you might have nine, ten people from their own, the statute gives us that ability, say, we must take care of engine. What, will that board still? What, will that board still?
Okay, included in the enabling legislation, and I recently have read it carefully, their, their law, it says they're responsible for indigent care in the county, for making studies of the causes of doing all types of things. It didn't say exclusive, but they have direct power regarding indigent care and provide, you know, and they can, well, they can construct hospitals, clinics, remodel, hire parties to provide for indigent care, to provide for healthcare. It has a very broad power. And of course, it was, was done in the time that probably, you know, once Lake Shore operated the hospital, then they, they leased it. But it, but it, it is a very, has very broad powers, and I'm, and I don't know how you amend those, but I do know preserving the bonding thing is a benefit to the county. And it's, and once you give it, once you dissolve it, you, and I'm not sure if you can dissolve parts of it and leave that, but, but you really want to keep that power because it, it gives you a way that you don't have to, the Board of County Commissioners issue all those bonds.
Mr. Chair, having served on that board in the past, this is the first time I've ever heard of this. I mean, it's very interesting to me, and I understand that's pretty significant what Richard's saying, but the other hospital authorities that I know have dissolved in the state of Florida, how did they handle this situation, or has anybody heard of that?
Okay, interestingly, the only, you know, I've worked a lot with Citrus County, and I probably was hired there because of my experience here. And so, but anyway, they leased their hospital, DCA, it's thriving, it's doing well. It was a prepaid lease, they got all the money, kind of like happened here. And, and the hospital assumed all the direct indigent care just through their policies that they do, there is in the program. And so the authority now has one employee, they meet, again, they have trouble getting enough board members appointed by the governor, it's the same thing, they have funds that were investing. They have tried to, and again, I'm sure it's the local legislation, I hope this isn't in the news tomorrow in Inverness, but, but, you know, to, to become deactivated, to have a sunset plan, and they didn't have any luck doing it because it never made it through. They've asked the city and the county, well, just would you take this over? And they said, no. And mainly, it was a public record. They had a number of lawsuits, but they cleared them all up now, they're pretty much down, but they had, but they haven't had anyone showing interest in assuming their duties. Now, they didn't have the power to issue bonds, I don't think. So I think that wasn't.
And, you know, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but, and, and, I mean, I'm glad you came, Richard, because it really, it got my attention, but I, I'll tell you straight out what I told Governor Scott when he appointed me. If I had the authority, I'd kill all taxation authorities that are set up like Swan River Water Management and the hospital authority. It is taxation without representation. And anybody in this room that knows anything about Swan River Water Management or other like entities like that, it's a big part of your life if you're in the world we are in. So my goal, in next however many years, is I'm going to be in our representatives' ears, and I want to do away with them because it's not right. And, you know, and I understand the bonding thing, and I know that's very important on the balance sheet on the county's side of things, but I guess right now, no more than I know about it, what you've explained to me, I'm willing to risk that because it's, this is not right. It's, it's just not right for the community, in my opinion, I'm only one, but.
And following up on Commissioner Murphy's comments, there would have to be a complex ballot put before the taxpayer if you want to abandon Lake Shore Hospital Authority, but you want to restructure it where there is enough non-taxing energy to be able to assist a healthcare provider if they want to move into the county. All of this has to be explained on that referendum. Am I right, Joe?
I'm not, the referendum only relates, relates to dissolution. I think restructuring could be done by the legislature. Now, it does have to be done by the legislature. But yeah, the, the referendum's only for a full dissolution. So I think as long as you're not creating some untoward liability on the taxpayers, you should be okay. If you were going to add taxing authority through this, but we're not, we're taking it away.
I, I was just gonna say, I, talking to our legislators, I've had a conversation with them, one of the things they told me was, if you do away with it, you're probably never gonna get it back. That's for sure. They, they pretty much stressed that. But now, they did say there was a way to restructure it, like they're talking about, where you would still have a board over the Lake Shore Hospital Authority. But, and they had a name for it, and I can't even remember the name for it right now, but basically, that board would be appointed by the county commissioners.
By who?
By the, by the county commissioners. It wouldn't be a board by the county commissioners, but it would be a board appointed by the county commissioners. They might know the name, and, that's it.
Yeah, or Dependent Special District, because you, you wouldn't have to have taxing authority.
You say you wouldn't have to have taxing authority?
No, I mean, okay, I think that it could be a Dependent Special District that would be kind of like, you remember the IDA?
Yeah.
If it was a Dependent Special District, the board appointed the members, it had its own set of books and accounting things, and it could do various things. So I think something like that is kind of what, you know, then you would retain the benefits, you would retain the, the mission for healthcare and indigent healthcare so that the county didn't have to have a new department. But, and honestly, I think the authority, it would be good because it's so hard to get the governor to appoint members, and it's been that way for 20 years under multiple governors.
Yeah. Well, what I would say about that is we all know, local government. I'm sorry. Local government should be the best government. So, you know, the governor don't know a lot of people from county, I put it that way. We know a lot of people from county. We know leaders of county. And I'm, I'm not saying anything against the people on the board, Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board now, but.
No, it's nothing about a board, you're right.
But that's, that's the first time, tonight's the first time I've heard about this bonding thing. Nobody's mentioned that before.
Yeah.
Oh.
We might need to have something to sit down to study that, you know?
Well, the only thing is, if we're gonna put it on the referee, if we're gonna put a referendum on the ballot, we might need to do that tonight.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I, I don't know, Joe, I, I mean, we can see what wish the people were, we're just a straw poll. And, you know, I'd say the, the referendum is something you could cancel at any time if it come back and say, you know, people don't want to do it.
Well, and again, I understand it's a non-binding referendum, so it really, the only, it's just for informational purposes. If it, if it's overwhelmingly passed, then you probably need to do something about it. If it fails, you may want to drop this altogether. I do, there is a motion on the floor, and, and what I wanted to do, I think David mentioned it, was suggest the language. Stash had already put some work in on this, and so I'm not, I'm gonna steal his work, but I'll give him the credit. The referendum would read, "Do you support dissolution of the Lake Shore Hospital Authority?" question mark. This is a non-binding opinion poll, period. So it lets people know what they're voting on, and it's just a very simple, direct question. So that, to Commissioner Williams' point, that one won't be hard to understand.
Yeah.
If the legislature adopts some restructuring and it does turn out it has to be a referendum, it will be more complex.
Well, and, and, you know, it would give us an idea, or it wouldn't give us an idea, it'd tell us, it would tell us exactly what the people of Columbia County, how they feel.
Well, we got a motion, I second it, to that effect.
And in the meantime, we can study this other thing, and see if it's acceptable.
And, and the other thing that, that sort of kind of concerns me also is the business that the Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board does with the old building before it's dissolved. To me, it's getting back to one of Mr. Hill deals, you know, since I'm speaking. We inherited everything that's been done. I'm not too, too fond on that, you know, since I'm speaking. I don't like to get my dog in fights, and I don't know how big the dog gonna be.
Well, the only thing I would say about that is we're elected to make these decisions.
No, we, 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 we're elected to make those decisions, just like we did the night on Mr. Hill property.
Right.
We looked out for the best interest of the board and the taxpayer.
I was just referring back to what Commissioner Murphy said a while ago about unelected, you know, people.
Mr. Williams, Chair, I'm not quite sure what you're concerned about, about the building, explain that.
We, we, if, if, even if they buy, Meridian buys Lake Shore Hospital a building, just the hospital.
Yes, okay.
When everything runs around, everything being resolved, we, we get the good, the bad end of it. Just because we own everything now.
Yeah.
We inherit, we inherit whatever.
Well, everything that is, we inherited, just like we would have with the Hill property.
Lawsuits, potential lawsuits, stuff like that.
Well, Joe, am I right?
It, yeah, and the, the easy example is the political, you know, goings-on right now with respect to Meridian and the hospital itself, and, and that's just an easy example. Those problems would fall at your doorstep. But, you know, Commissioner Ford's point, y'all, y'all navigate that kind of stuff all the time, but it is a consideration.
But I think Meridian issue would be resolved long before, long before, like, I mean, we're talking two years right now, you're talking two years.
Yeah, and, and I was just using that by way of.
And we could stop it at any point, if we wanted to.
Yeah.
Am I correct, Joe?
Yes, sir. That's right.
All right, I call for a vote. All in favor, signature as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign, that motion carries. Well, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
David, you got one more item?
Mr. Powell, I appreciate you bringing that to our attention.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Powell.
You earned your paycheck, not to send a bill to Dale. He needs to run around with you.
All right, just so this board knows, you have previously done a conduit bond with, I believe Belmont Academy back when Ben was county manager, so it's not new to the board. So the next item on the agenda is the FDLE Law Enforcement Assistance Award Agreement. As you know, two years ago, the legislature gave $1 million for salaries in the Sheriff's Department. Then last year, they gave an additional $300 and some odd dollars. So what happened is now that the state legislature approved that money to continue in the upcoming budget. So they're giving you one, or where is it? Somewhere in there.
$1,378,388.
Yeah. In money, that's the money from before being continued. If they did not approve that money, then you would have a shortage of $1,328,000 in your budget.
So this money has been approved by the state for this year's budget?
You have the agreement for that money. If you approve it, they continue to receive that funding. If you don't approve it, their budget will be short by that amount of money.
And Mr. Chair, David, in that agreement, how long did legislate, when that was in discussion two years ago, wasn't that a 10-year target, something like that, that's what I remember?
It is, but it's also subject to appropriation every year, and they could end it at any time.
That's exactly the point I was trying to make. And board, this, I'm typical death, that legislature has given this, where it can be passed on to the people, hopefully in the way that we all hope it would be. We, we all understand it, no doubt, in my mind, but this year is a, in my opinion, we're coming up, this hits perfect at the budget cycle because things like this is what we need to take into deep consideration of start planning for the future. Because three years from now, two years from now, maybe next year, legislature says, boom, you know, we have a catastrophic whatever, we're not gonna fund this. Well, guess what? We gotta fund it. So we need to start putting a plan together towards that, you know, let's target on eight years or whatever it is. What are we, this year, three or two?
This will be the third year.
This will be the third year. So, I mean, us as stewards of the taxpayers' responsibility, $10, I think this is time that we really need to, during this budget cycle, this and many other things, I got another discussion for workshop, but just keep that in the back of our minds because, you know, it is a, what's that, you go buy a car, and they say you ain't gotta pay the interest for another 90 days or 100, whatever, this is one of them, you know? And that's, that's gonna be a big deal when you need $80 million payrolls a day, and we're doing all this Ellisville and Megaside, it's, that stack of potatoes is getting pretty high. So there's something to think about.
So David.
Chair.
So David, they didn't, they didn't increase the money this year, though, they just kept it the same.
No, this is, this is the money that was previously approved, continued.
I know last year they increased, increased it.
Right, by 300 and something.
But they didn't, can't be the same this year.
Yes.
Okay. You know, comment for the motion to accept?
Certainly.
Got a motion by Mr. Murphy.
Okay.
Second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signature as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign, that motion carries. David, you still on?
The next item is the selection of the Value Adjustment Board. We need a board member and a citizen member to be on the Value Adjustment Board. This is requested by the Clerk of Courts.
A mean call.
So the next item then is Resolution Number 2024 R-23, changing the time of the first meeting in September. As you remember, the trim requirements are, all of your budget public hearings have to be night meetings. That first meeting that we're gonna have on September 5th has to be a night meeting. We just want to make sure that we pass this so that there's no question that first meeting will be a night meeting.
All right, a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024 R-23.
So moved.
Got a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signature as saying aye. Opposed, light sign, that motion carries.
And then finally, the loan agreement for the Florida Department of Commerce. This board of members, about two years ago, you approved a loan agreement with the Department of Commerce, and it was DEO, Department of Economic Opportunity. Well, it's time we need the money. So these are the actual loan documents that would be executed to borrow $5.5 million from what is now Florida Commerce for the wastewater treatment plant at North Florida Megan Dock.
This is something we talked about, and it's time to, to borrow the money now.
You voted on it previously, you set the terms previously, now it's time to borrow the money.
Motion, so moved. Got a motion by Mr. Ford, second by Mr. Phillips. All in favor, signature as saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, light sign, that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Public comment, three minutes. Anyone? Yes, Chair. Give your name to the clerk, please, sir.
My name is Ben Loston. I think someone needs to build a spreadsheet or some type of document that shows exactly all of the pros and cons of this Lake Shore Hospital Authority Board. I think the people that will vote on the straw poll are being swayed only by the media perception and not by true facts of the benefits versus potential harm of having the board remain active. As we learned tonight, there are some things even members of this board didn't realize. That's one item. Second, in regards to Rum Island. I was at Rum Island on July 6th, which is Saturday, about 10:00 a.m. We pulled up and paid for parking and found it looked like the last available spot. We went in, had a fun time, and saw one deputy. By the time we left, there were multiple deputies there, and they were talking on their loudspeaker about towing vehicles. and they were talking on their loudspeaker about towing vehicles. When I asked the deputy what was happening, he said that anyone that was parked outside of the gate was being towed. That was, I think, a little bit of an overreaction and that was also causing additional drama when there had been none originally when we arrived, before vehicles were getting towed. I think just one deputy could park inside the gates just as a visual deterrent and that would likely be enough. I think if we remove the caution tape and the no parking signs from the edge of the road, then once all of the parking spots on the inside are used up, then any overflow would park on the road. Perhaps put up some no loitering signs, but I think once the parking lot is full and the roadsides nearby are full, that anyone else that comes would likely just turn around and go somewhere else that is less crowded, all on their own. My guess is that the edges of the road would not be ruined as most likely this park is only used over capacity on holidays and during the summer weekends. Thank you.
Good. Thank you, Ben. Anyone else? Three minutes, anyone? Okay, that closes, uh, uh, public comments. Staff, any comments? Got a call, comments, staff? Okay. Uh, commissioners, any comments?
Uh, yeah, I would just speak about Rum Island for, for a minute. So, we all know that we've had multiple complaints from the property owners. So, what happens when they park on the road being that they block the driveways to all the property owners down there. And, and then people in the park, they'll block the road where they can't get out. We've had that problem. They won't quit parking just because roadside's full. They'll, they'll pull up from people's driveways and park that's on private property. Uh, I think Clint can, you get with Clint about it. He, he hears all about a lot more than I do, but uh, we've had multiple owners down there complain about, they can't get out of their driveway, can't get out of their house. Uh, as far as the deputies go, for the rest of this summer, there will be a deputy, one deputy on weekends, Saturday and Sunday down there for, uh, I think it's going to be from about eleven to seven, somewhere around there. Maybe ten to, ten to six, but sheriff aside that. Uh, on holiday weekends, there will be two deputies down there. Uh, for the rest of this summer, we will be paying, board of county commissioners will be paying the deputies to be at Rum Island. Hopefully, we're working with the sheriff. Hopefully, next year, he'll be able to put some of his school resource officers at Rum Island during, on the weekends and holidays. We won't have to charge for it. But according to sheriff, they're all, they are all already assigned to different jobs for this summer. So, he can't get them down there this summer. So, um, that's kind of where we're at with Rum Island right now. We hope, we hope to, or I hope that we can take care of most of the problem with law enforcement on the weekends. And during the week, if it gets to be a problem during the week, or, you know, like if we have a holiday during the week, there'll be deputies during the week also. Yeah, you can ask one question. Come on.
You're, you're all right, Chair? One question. Okay, just a quick question. Like, I go to Jacksonville Beach and all that and they're super crowded all the time. But it seems like, for some reason, maybe, I don't know why, but people don't park in front of other people's driveway. They'll park everywhere else, but they don't park on people's property or in front of their driveway. Do you think maybe it's because they have signs like, you know, we'll tow if you block driveways? Or I'm not sure how they do it, but you know what I'm saying?
But I will tell you, we have multiple signs down there, no parking and vehicles will be towed. And they just tore the signs down and took them with them.
There's still signs.
They get signs.
You know, they're different.
Different crowds.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. But I will tell you this now, and I know you probably have too. I've been to the Keys, I've been to Saddle Bell Island, I've been to different places where they have these public beaches, parking area. And they pretty much, they have signs everywhere that says, says, once all parking spots are full, your vehicle will be towed from our parking spot. So, you know, that's kind of.
Yeah. I, I was only saying it looked like the last little bit, almost to Rum Island, looked like it was still like state property. I, I'm not saying park on, you know, people's property.
Yeah.
I'm just saying it looked like, I don't know, maybe five hundred or a thousand feet was still state property right up next to it.
Yeah.
That's the only spot. You know, after that, I agree. You shouldn't be parking on people's yards. Absolutely not. That's ridiculous.
Here is one of the reasons for the parking, no parking. You know Rum Island can hold very, nah, a lot of people. Probably everybody can park inside the park if they got two people in the car. When you motherfucker at, by the number of cars can park there. Rum Island is full already. It's full already.
What, it, just, just an idea, like some other places, they say, like even downtown, you know, this, this parking lot is only for so-and-so and if not, you'll be towed at your own expense. But they don't monitor it. It's monitored by the towing company, I believe.
Most of the, in Gainesville, they are, yes.
Yeah. So, I don't know if that's maybe an option to where you wouldn't have to have deputy, I'm just saying it was creating friction with the deputies calling towing people.
Well, the deputies aren't just for the parking.
Well, I agree, but at that point, that's all they're doing.
We have problems with alcohol. We have problem with pets, you know, dogs, people.
I agree. I just, I didn't like seeing deputies having to call on parking. I'm like, maybe you could, you know, do that where the parking is monitored by, you know, towing company, potentially. Yeah.
Have a certain tow company do all the towing.
And then potentially that would take it for, then they're not mad at the deputy because the towing company says, it says right there that our company will tow you if you're in this spot.
And, and.
Potentially.
And right now, I'm, I'm going, I'm talking to different, uh, places that have this same problem.
Okay.
And I'm doing some research now and looking for some better solutions. So, you know, they, I hope we have some changes there pretty soon that, that'll work. But I'm working, like I said, we're working with Clint and I'm actually talking to some other county commissioners in some of the areas that have these public beaches and public places with small parking lots and how they handle it. And pretty much, what I've heard so far is just what you just said, towing. Only way to stop it is start towing vehicles. And when you start towing vehicles, they'll quit parking. If they pull through, they're nowhere to park, uh, they'll leave because they know that if they park, their, their vehicle's going to get towed.
I, I just, this way, they're, they're mad at the towing company, which essentially falls back on themselves. Otherwise, they're mad at deputies and I don't want them mad at deputies over towing, essentially.
If there's no parking signs up and you park, you might as well be mad at yourself because you knew what was going to happen.
Yeah, but especially when it says we'll tow it, then, then they're more scared. If it just says no parking, no one cares. If it says we're going to tow it, that's when they get scared.
With company monitor by everybody.
Yes, because then, then they know what's going to happen and they're going to have to pay us.
Thank you, Ben. Yeah.
All right, Mr. Howard, Mr. Phillips.
Good.
Mr. Murphy.
Good.
All right, motion for adjournment, somebody?
adjourned.